All the city council meeting to order at seven thirty and with roll call, we are joined by council member. George Schultz, Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin, Councilmember Dominguez, Councilmember Preisic. First item on, oh, and Councilmember Martinez is running late. He will be here shortly. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Second?
And there is a motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay sign. The ayes have it. Next up is approval of the consent agenda and it is just the city council minutes from the August twentieth meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is approved. Item number four is reports and first up is city engineer Leo Foley who cannot attend tonight. So we'll turn to the city manager submitted a report and any comments?
Um, I could just real quickly, Mr. Foley sent an email. So I'll just go over what he had. He visited with All American today and now they're communicating to schedule a start mid-September for the Columbus Street sidewalks. If you can remember a few weeks ago that we were telling them that that would start after school.
Right.
And but today he's saying that they're not communicating mid-September. When Adam and I have a chance, we'll visit with you because I'm really getting concerned. They're saying that it's going to take only a couple of weeks to maybe complete the project, but again, with us coming into the construction season, I just want to make sure that we don't spend another winter without with this project still ongoing. So. So we'll visit, well, number two, integration of JECO. Needs to finish the integration. They, he's saying they did some, but now Austin Maine, he thinks that they're in a position now where they can finish that with JECO. I'm not real sure. Do you know anything more on that, Adam? Yeah, I haven't anything else. Yeah, that's what I thought. So. And then there's a state assistance fee that's a part of that process. So. I ensure all of you and I will make sure we follow it with you that goal number two we want to end on. Naughty Circle Drive. In my, in the report, and I think if you've seen other reports, there is a water leak, a continued water leak on that Naughty Circle Drive. It's been traced back to, at this point in time by our staff to the service lines that were damaged during the upgrade to the streets. We do have a, we have another party coming out tomorrow to perform, you know, a second look at it to identify, to zero down best we can as to where that leak is occurring. And they were actually here before, and I think they were the first ones who could hear the leak through some testing. So with all of that said, we're going to get that report and Leo has continued, like my staff, to work with All American to see whether or not this needs to go back on bonding for the project due to that damage to the service line. I think the burden is on the city to make sure that we can provide that that leak is actually occurring where it was to have been fixed during that process. So does that sound about right, Adam?
Yeah. The, it's water going out, nothing's coming in. So people are safe with the regular, yeah. It's not getting their house and it's going to, I'm hearing that whole anybody and it's getting these ones.
No. Okay. So I just wanted to, um, the update I have for you for cities, city manager reports covers the end of July through through August, providing you the information on all of these ongoing projects. And again, a lot of this should be consistent with what you're seeing also with the city department reports and you know, however, I may have a little more work or steps that are involved in these processes. So. So I just wanted to point all of those things out. Quickly, Sherry, Clerk Cooper and I attended the beginning of INCODE ten software training. That'll go this entire weekend, next week as well. We started today with establishing the administration and the security of users. And again, every day it'll just give them to a little bit more detail of training. FEMA reimbursement is deadline is this Friday, so I'll be continuing to work through that process. Along with the Iowa grants and I found that saved in there, just some time consuming work that is required of those. From the electric department, I'm going to just skip right over to. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, lead service line project, currently water staff is working on that. There's the compliance that we'll have that report due in October. Chris Preisic with B and K has came in and assisted our staff. They've identified that there's possibly some steps or things that hadn't been completed by the third-party contractor that the water department had started working with for this project. But they are at this time going back and forth over those items. There's a possibility that we'll have staff have to go from door to door to collect some more information. And again, I did provide you a link. So if you want more information with regarding the EPA compliance for that and what's required, we can have that information at that link. The strategic planning, I provided you an update within your packet. I just went back to all of our documentation for what was voted on. Because I think we, what I identified was we have worked on some things that may have not been a voted priority, but we've still worked on those. So I wanted to give an update as to where those are falling in with what staff has been doing. The other side, again, working with Lynch Dallas on the employee handbook, which is a part of that as well. Upwards childcare program. So the Army Reserve Pilot Program, it, it went smooth. You know, it's one of those things where you can it really go this well the next time around and boy, it, it did not. So. And it honestly is not the program itself. It is just the difference in processing of payment compared to the federal level with the Army Reserve and the National Guard Bureau based on a state level. So, and I know Councilmember Dominguez has been in on those communications. With the help of Clerk Cooper and myself and just upwards, we were able to meet additional requirements and with the invoicing. So the first payment it took it took them nearly sixty days to process it, but we were able to finally get it through. And with that said, now Justice reporting, you know, the program is going really well. It's doubled almost in its need. And from that, I'll just go back to her and ask her, you know, with this now moving forward, if we could get some more statistics and data reports on the programs. I know Councilmember Dominguez and I have both been contacted by other states and other cities where they've taken on the Army Reserve program, but I think it'd be kind of nice to know if the National Guard side of it's getting a little more notices was. So I'll come back to you with that. From operations, I just shared some correspondence that I've had with individual members of the community. I just want to bring you up to date. It had been brought by council about the U.S. Post Office and that hole that was located. Adam identified that that is part of the private property, but since staff was already there, they went ahead and filled that area. So, but again, going forward with that, we need to be the private, very responsible. And again, we've been working with the Children's Festival organizers, identifying some additional needs, making sure that we're lining up. I had within our budget, I did order three in addition to the portable restrooms that are there for sanitary purposes, because there's going to be a considerable amount of tendees and I did not want to see the burden of those business owners being bothered by wanting use of a public restroom. So felt since we had it within our budget to go ahead and order some additional ones in there one day. So to help out with that, but nothing more than that. But we're still waiting on insurance. The bonding piece of it for the festival and it's been, it's been communicated to us that they will have that prior to the events. If not, then that'll be a different discussion. So, but we are required to have that. Just in, just briefly, the nuisance items, we've got currently about five citations with property owners. They have been working well with Eddie. One of the property owners was took it upon themselves to get the compliance. And so we were able to settle that out of course since they removed the items and cleaned up their area. So there, just going on to more of the communications with, with Brittany and just going over what she's been doing. With utilities, the electric superintendent, Cody Franklin had provided that after the work was done, it was noticed that we had some other exposures from the water damage from the roof not being repaired for a number of years and that is showing around windows and some of the walls. So I've asked him to, you know, try to put together an idea and get some estimates on that. The other thing that recently occurred is, so in August, we do what's called a black start testing and the black start testing failed. This is a very important piece because if we are separated from the power grid, this is the only availability the city can do in order to, they have to be able to start Black Start the generation with the OP in order to get the other generation generators up. And unfortunately, there was a water pump that failed and they hired, I think it was Mississippi Valley Pump to come in and redo what they could to get the pump to work. When they did get the pump to work, then unfortunately, there, there was a combustion that caused a fire within that. And so the department is continuing to work on trying to assess the damage, see what can be done because without being able to do a black start, it does impact the, the utility and our credits that we earn from our wholesale provider, but we'll keep you up to date on that. The water sewer, as I said, they've been working on the lead compliance pieces. They've had several water leaks that they've also had to work on and they've worked really well and fast on those. To include, they were able to complete the annual lead copper testing and was got their reports filed timely with the DNR and then they have some staffing discussion that I have listed in there as well. Just trying to think, just right off the top, just the financial management stuff working with the clerk. The debt report was completed timely. I got a list of our next set of reports that we work on together. We'll have a budget amendment that we're going to need to get put together before October one with you. And then we'll start looking on the next budget. And let me see, there's just a listing of different meetings and planning and training. And I just tried to identify real quickly with the city supervisors meeting, what we discussed and went over. Just some upcoming dates and meetings. And however, I'm sorry, Councilmember Schultz, but we met on Friday and I did not get that listener to touch base. So down within your report is like I said, that update. And I also provided you the newly released legislation items for twenty twenty four year. Thank you.
Just a couple of things to follow up on. One is that I was at the electrical plant and I would encourage council members to stop by or make an appointment with Kobe would be better than stopping by and looking at some of the things. I won't have the correct terminology, but the metal pillars or whatever that hold that they're rusting away at the bottom. There has been, in my opinion, some serious neglect of that building that needs to be taken a look at before that gets worse. So that's one thing. The second thing is you say completed C and CPM. That's not the completion of the course.
No, 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 just completing that training portion. Yeah. Yeah, just some more leadership, I suppose, and this kind of the violations. So, yeah.
Any other questions for the city administrator? Okay. The police report, those treats, safety and communications are part of the package. Were there any questions that folk had regarding them? Or other questions that weren't in the reports? Committee reports, I don't believe we've had any committees meet. All right, then we'll move on to item five, beer and liquor. Licenses, twelve month class C retail alcohol license for Guadalupe Mexican restaurant expiring September fifth, two thousand twenty five. Twenty five? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? It hit me why it's twenty five. Hearing none, all of. Oh, sure.
I'm sure there's a reason for this, but noticing just on the application of the contact person is different from the individual owner. It's not like the normal thing, I think that to other applications.
I'm going to read to the question. They can set it up however they want to based on how they were going on the application or if they need that. If not, something that comes to us, what you're seeing in front of you is what has been submitted to the alcohol industry. That's not like they don't turn that application into us is what I feel from that website that said.
Are there any other further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We'll move on to item number six, vendor voucher claim. First is six A vendor voucher claim list number one in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion?
Um, I noticed there are a lot of Lynch Dallas costs and which, you know, attorneys are expensive, but I was wondering. But then I just noticed it and you know, if we could maybe by the end of this, this little year, see how, how much money we've spent on attorneys and just consider hiring a city attorney. They might even be less expensive or, you know, than contracting. That's it.
Good comment. Are there other comments from members of the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We move to six B vendor voucher claim list number two in the amount of forty-six dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
By abstain.
Okay, and one abstention. Are there, all opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Six B is approved. Next is six C. Libraries prepaid claims in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. And it has been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We move to item number seven, public comments and correspondence. This is the time that's set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those in the agenda. So are there any public comments? Two, are there any public comments? Three, are there any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to comments, public comments from city council members and start with Councilmember Martinez. Okay.
Done. I did have one person ask that dog, because they saw the new houses going up by subway, like if they were interested in purchasing, like what's the process? Where do they go? Who do they? I don't know if you all know that, but there's a website or.
I don't know that. We could defer to our economic development director on this and know that there are some pro, uh, some meetings going on for new purchases, but.
Council can certainly direct those inquiries to my office. There are some renters involved in that project, so we'll be happy for that.
Okay. Do you know if the properties are all getting sold or there's still availability? That was another question they were wondering because I know in the city, a lot of the times they're already sold before they even build, so.
Right. So there are three, generally speaking, three types of homes being built as part of that project. I don't know about the same family ones that were spoken for. The zero lot apartments are sold or designated to the individual developers that are actually structuring them. What I understand would be their whole way from actually.
Councilmember Preisic.
I have.
Okay, all right. City manager.
No, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk. Speaking your head, no, okay. All right, we'll move on to item number eight, old business. First up is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four zero eight two zero hyphen zero seven and ordinance amending the code ordinance of the city of West Liberty by amending provision pertaining pertaining to solid waste collection fees. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Was there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I heard you clear your throat, but I didn't hear. Okay. So is there a discussion?
Can you remind me, clerk, like what the amendment was?
For the garbage one. So it is changing. Essentially what was happening goes forward is that the rates were charged to the individuals. So when we changed it, was that twenty twelve? I think twenty twelve or twenty thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen.
It was originally written this way, which is the intention where the landlord is responsible for the garbage and they essentially divvy it out amongst their tenants because what was happening is what we were charging based on the rate that a previous city manager had put in place, we weren't collecting enough revenue for it. So we were actually taking more down to the junk than what we would pay for. So we have adjusted it to take it back to the true intent of what it is, the new kind of intended situation.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I was never aware, Karen had reached out and just asked a question, just asked to, to make sure we disclosed the fee information. I did speak with the clerk and just wanted to follow up from our correspondence and that we disclosed that information. It's on our fee matrix and then we have it within the documents on the.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Preisic?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez? The two passes by zero.
We then move to item eight B, second reading with the possibility of waiving the thirteen of ordinance twenty twenty-four zero eight two zero hyphen zero eight and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Liberty by amending provisions pertaining to weeds and noxious growth. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve and also waive the third reading.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second? It's been moved in second and is there a discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Preisic?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Item eight B, second reading with the possibility of waiving the third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four zero eight two zero hyphen zero nine and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Liberty by adding a new section regarding open dumping prohibited. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve and also the ability to waive the third reading?
Is there a second?
Okay.
It has been, that been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Preisic?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion practice by zero.
We now move to nine A, discussion and appropriate action taken by the city council on the refund request for Ally Carlson swim lesson fees. So the process is discussion first, then a motion, then consent vote. But is there a discussion regarding this?
Should be.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the refund?
Motion to approve refund?
Is there a second?
Second.
Although is there, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We move to item nine B, resolution twenty twenty-four zero nine zero two three hyphen one seven six, a resolution setting wages for the West Liberty Streets Department. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Looks like this is just for an event.
Nice.
Is there further discussion? If not, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Preisic?
Yes.
Martinez? Motion passes by zero.
Next up is item nine C, resolution twenty twenty-four zero nine zero three hyphen one seven seven. A resolution setting the wages for the West Liberty Ambulance Department for fiscal year twenty-four hyphen twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Music?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez? Motion passes by zero.
The move to nine D, resolution twenty twenty-four zero nine zero three hyphen one seven eight, a resolution appropriate approving the acquisition of real estate owned by the West Liberty Community School District in the city of West Liberty, Iowa. At five two seven seven six Q W two. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I just had one question. In, on this property, are we going to be acquiring everything that's within the property? It's my understanding it's the building. And whatever the contents. Best liberty re-capture price value of electrical labor provides at the new sports complex. That is city of West Liberty. So what what is that saying exactly?
It's a, it's a value of share, so the cost of the seven fifty K transformer was twelve thousand dollars. And in um the labor for the installation, um, the supplies. Yep, yes, twenty-seven thousand, so um that transaction is a trade. Supplying labor.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McPherson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Freezer?
Yes.
Martinez? Motion passes by zero.
Next up is item nine E, resolution twenty twenty-four zero nine zero three hyphen one seven nine. A resolution to accept the I T audit cross proposal for audit of West Liberty I T server. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Is there discussion?
Mister Mayor and Council, um, just uh, well, last time we had the audit was in two thousand and seventeen and that was prior to. Um, the building, uh, Nick he taking with the I T position. Um, this is similar to our financial audits, but this is um in an audit in addition to identify if we have any. Um, cyber risk, um, fire laws or and that are sort of functioning as they should. That we're at the level of capacity and and it kind of gives you all of those details, but we did have one done in two thousand seventeen, which helped us identify. You know, the needs and the expectations with the with the I T uh employee and this way we look to have the same. Um, so we can set some goals and um identify if we have any, um, you know, security risks. Also, it's good to feel by from um our insurance and our auditors, uh, financial auditors. Like to see that.
The incidences of breaches have increased dramatically since. Is there further discussion?
I just was wondering if this was something that we need to bid out or if it was something that just.
So we already have a contract to deal with Marco, um, and then we just, um, we didn't seek proposals on it since we already work with them. Um, on our other systems, so then as a third party, we have been coming in specifically doing that. That specific item, I think, going forward, if we want to, um, we could definitely send it out for proposals, but.
No, the reason I ask is just because I have no clue whether or not this is like an extreme cause or something like this, or if it's comparable.
It is somewhat from what we're seeing or what I've seen through the lead. Um, it's kind of all over the place and it's you identifying what you want of that. Um, so again, a lot of times, if you're not already working with additional. Internal items, then you send it out for a proposal or, um, so you can go through specifically what you want. But with our vendor um relationship with Marco, um, we've already identified and so they'll come back in and they'll. Reassess and identify based on what we already worked with them in the past. Um, but yeah, but if council in the future, if we want to send it out, we'll say.
The, I'm sure the I T individual we have with the city also has a lot of input on what we need to look at as well.
Um, well, it's just like with us, you know, we. We actually will remove them from the process, but where the input will come in is when we get the report back. And then we would sit down and go over that with the with the I T and also present that to them. Necessarily, we don't have them come in and go through, I mean, we have the I T person allow them access to. Um, but there's a lot of steps in there that we ask, we don't, you know, necessarily want the I T person. As they're trying to audit and trying to find if there's any breaches or any issues, so. I'll just stick to what I know and what these folks, like, those are good questions and the same, and. It's just our, our relationship with with them in the past and with what we already have, we put that.
Is there further discussion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Freezer?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Um, last item on the agenda is uh set the date for the public hearing on annexation. For October first, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty P M. And Mayor Pro Tim, this is important because I will be in Germany. So it should fit with your schedule.
Yes, yes. Just for discussion, this is just the um early working through the process, um. For uh deep talk, uh, Gary's annexation on uh East Eight Street. Um, so we've already moved through the public hearing process with the county. And the board of trustees, um, we had not received any response. Um, this next part of that timeline is, um, we'll look to get a response back from the county supervisors. No later than the ninth of September, um, this may include a resolution and then approving, um, the annexation request. Um, to allow the city to continue with their process and then we file with the state. So if everything goes according to uh the timeline, then we'll be ready for the public hearing on the annexation. There's a whole lot of other steps after that, just so man or so, this is just the first part of many steps.
Is there consensus that can be the public here tonight? All right. Item ten, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned.